We are glad to be here again this afternoon and we'll start with Ms. Dorella. We have called this meeting officially Training to Order.
Thank you Chairman McNeely and thanks everyone for coming today. The first item on the agenda is the review of the synergistics program. So as a district, we have obviously, as all school boards have dealt with, a lot of budgetary pressures, mostly external, we deal with limited funding and underfunded, unfunded mandates that get passed down from other governing bodies. So we're always kind of in search of creative solutions that will allow us to save money. Obviously savings equals more efficiency, but also being able to address priorities. And our largest single line item in our budget, with the exception of payment and employees, and famous charter schools is energy. And that consists of sewer, water, propane, electricity. And you know, we've been looking for solutions for our dilemma, for our energy for the last few years. We think this is a pretty good solution for the board to consider. And really, the program itself is budget neutral, which of course we like. There's a lot of companies that have require control purchases and loans and things of that nature. That's a more extensive, long-term program. This is really based on behavior modification. And when we look at areas to reduce our expenditures, goal number one is always do as little to affect the classroom as possible. The energy savings, we feel like fits in, you know, obviously with that mantra, but also fits in with our general sense of stewardship for Alachua County. Obviously, there's some, you know, some external factors we're subject to. We've talked a lot about our relationship with GRU and the rates we're kind of subject to. My approach is always control what you can control. What we can control is how much energy we use. So without further ado, I want to introduce Steve Jones, who's going to kind of walk you through the synergistic program. And of course, if there's any questions specific to my area, my involvement. We also have Teresa Spurling, who I should have mentioned before. This really is, this program's really designed to enhance Teresa and her area's efforts. She's done a fantastic job, but obviously as a small office, it's difficult to affect the kind of change that we feel is meaningful. But she's, you know, obviously done a great job. This is really over and above that to kind of make, you know, meaningful, permanent changes and improvements. So that, with that said, I will introduce Steve Jones with synergistic.
Good afternoon. Madam Chairwoman, I'm Superintendent, members of the board, thank you for having me. I'm going to talk a little bit about what the synergistic partnership looks like and then I'm going to go through it. And anytime you have any questions, please ask and then at the end, we'll ask a few questions. I was telling Alex earlier, I live in Alabama, from Alabama. I retired, I was a public servant for about 29 years. I want to take the chance or the opportunity to thank y'all for what you're doing. I always make a point of doing that at school board members' meetings. It's amazing stuff you do. My younger brother decided he wanted to go to University of Florida. So with much argument within my family at Auburn, he came to the University of Florida. So I've got a little bit tied here and I just donated $185 to the Alachua County Sheriff's Department in Waldo because apparently it went from 50 to 30 in about 100 feet and I didn't quite see that. So, and I've been told that I'm not the first guy that that's happened to. So I'm glad to be here and thanks for having me. Okay, and I've emulated what I'm going to have up on the board in front of you. I changed it a little bit from what Alex sent you earlier, but it's pretty much basically the same thing. Synergistic is a company that's been around for about 34 years, 35 years, started by a gentleman named Dr. Spears. He was a school board member in West Texas and they got a grant for air conditioning units back in the late 70s and they realized they didn't have the funds to pay for the electricity that the air conditioning units were going to require. He put together a behavioral program that we've been in business for about 35 years that I'm going to explain a little bit about. This is who you are. This was given to me by your organization. I've spent a lot of time with Teresa, who did a fabulous job, and with Alex talking about the numbers. This is what you spend annually on utilities. That is a 18, 19 number. We try not to look too much at the COVID year, but the last good baseline year that you have, this is what your spend was with all your commodities. Notice the column on the right, a dollar 60 a square foot, and that's kind of a benchmark that people use in the energy world of spend. Who we are, like I said, we've been around for 34 years, almost 35 now. We're in 1,500 partners throughout the country, mostly K-12. We're in the higher ed world and we're also in the municipality and government world, Alachua County Government. Ms. Leavren, they already partner with us and have been a partner for about a year and having some really good success with them. Our value, what we do, what do we do? What is the value proposition that we do? Healthy, maintaining healthy buildings, educating and involving the students and staff within our organizations and then creating a new funding source, funding source from those efforts. This program is guaranteed contractually that the fees paid for this program will be covered in your savings or we will refund the money to you. I think it's happened maybe six times in 35 years. So all of the fruits of the labor that I'm going to talk about are going to generate the funds to pay for the program and then put more money back into your budget. And I'll go into that a little bit as we get further. Three ways to save, Teresa and I had a good conversation about this, price management. You do pay one of the larger, I think Key West is the second highest in the state of Florida, you pay for electricity.
We're the highest.
Sir?
We're the highest.
You are the highest right now?
By far.
So you do have a high cost per kilowatt hour that you pay for electricity, there's no doubt. So there, there is a possibility that they'll call and say they'd like to reduce what you're paying, but that probably is not going to happen anytime soon. Efficiency upgrades, there's no doubt. If you replace the equipment within your organization, it will run more efficient and you will get an ROI on that. Usually comes with about a 20-year commitment and as Alex said earlier, financing and loaning. What we focus mainly on is the conservation and best management practices. How do we get your equipment to run in a more efficient manner? How do we get your classrooms and your administrative buildings to the optimal temperature that you want in a much more efficient way? How do we use the equipment that you have to provide healthy and safe air quality buildings within your organization? And that's the basis of our program. That's how we get there. The partnership that we have, we are not here to replace anybody in your organization whatsoever. We are here to augment the good work that you've already done. This company, I hired this company about five years ago before I retired and I was told at that point, it's still our mantra, we're as picky who we do business with as y'all are who you do business with. We do our best and have our most success with forward leaning organizations. And we have been talking, Alex, for almost a year and a half, something like that. We feel that the climate and the culture and the acumen here in Alachua County is something that would be successful. All of these things that you see on the left are going to be an extension of your organization. Those are our professional engineers, our HVAC design experts, our pneumatic experts, they will all be supporting this organization and this district. Energy specialists you see on the right, the bottom right, that is the boots on the ground crux of our program. What is that energy specialist? We will hire in Alachua County, two full-time employees and assign them to the district. We hire locally. We're not looking for HVAC mechanics because we are not going to replace or intrude on your HVAC team. We want people to understand the culture, understand the process of our program and are able to dedicate 100% their time to this program. It's about a 50, 60-hour a week job. We are in your facilities 80% of the time when nobody is here. We're in the facilities on breaks, shutdowns, weekends and nights, making sure that the equipment is running when it should be and not running when it shouldn't be. A little bit about what we've done, this is Pinellas County, that's Dr. Grego. Pinellas has been a client of ours twice. This is his second term with us. He actually hired us when he was in Osceola. But Pinellas County has received 96 Energy Star Awards on their facilities. That is a big part of what we do, is getting Energy Star recognition, get your building certified. And what that means is that your building is performing in the top 25% of all light facilities in the country. It's an award that costs about $3,000 if you were to try to do it on your own and it is part of what we bring with our program. We do that. I think Dr. Grego and Pinellas was actually Energy Star Partner of the Year last year for their energy conservation efforts. Viv County, Dr. Jones, who was the National Superintendent of the Year in 2019, has been a partner with us for a couple of years and they just did this, it was actually on NBC where they reduced their energy use 32% in the two years that they have been with us. So doing really good stuff across the country. This is one of my favorite parts, the involvement that we have with the organization, with the schools, unlike other organizations that may sell you equipment or have people that monitor your billing and your VNS systems, our energy specialists get involved with the day-to-day activities of your school. This is Pinellas County, Clay County, right down the road from y'all is doing the same thing. We take the culture of what we're doing and why we're doing it and explain it to the children and the staff. These are all little energy managers. I remember, I'm in my mid-50s, so they may not have this anymore, but they had school patrol when I was growing up and that was a neat thing to do, to be on the school patrol team. We have energy management teams in our elementary schools, our middle schools, where they are part of the program. They have their T-shirts and we are explaining to them what we are doing and how we're getting We take it to another level with your STEM, STEAM classes, any of your higher learning, physics, biology classes. We will take what we're doing and incorporate that into any curriculum that you want to have it on. It's one thing to talk about relative humidity, the wet bubble, how do you get the dew pressure number and the humidity, but it's another thing when the students are doing it in their own school and they are measuring and tracking the success that their school is having. We bring this to our, this is part of our program, a big part of our program. To me, I find that there's a lot more buy-in, there's understanding instead of dictation about why we're doing things and we're very, very transparent about what we do. Energy Star, I'll go back to that. Energy Star Partner of the Year. What that means with the EPA is the highest honor that they give any organization or energy management, conservation and sustainability. We have been, I think there were 16,000 in 2019 that applied for Energy Star, they pick about 60. We have been Energy Star Partner of the Year with the EPA for 12 straight years. We're very proud of what we've done. We're very proud of this, this recognition that they give us. It just kind of lends into what we do. We would love to start getting your schools Energy Star certified. Teresa, I don't think, I think I asked you, do y'all have any yet?
I think you have one.
One?
We have three more.
Right. That's going to be a big part of what we do is making sure that these, that we get your schools Energy Star certified, showing that they are healthy, showing that they are efficient and showing that the district is leaning forward in the environmental aspects of this. These are niceties, not so much necessities, but this is how we, this is a very, very, very small course. This is a dashboard that's available to anybody that wants it, any principal, any teacher, any board member. What it does is it tracks what the district is doing, building by building, meter by meter, ranks them any way you want. But where we like to take into the classrooms and explain to it, to the students and the district is the greenhouse emissions effect of what your efforts have done with this program. What's your high school, what the carbon footprint reduction that you as a school have done for the environment? And then we celebrate that. So as we're doing all of this work to get your energy consumption to an optimal number, we're also celebrating the successes that you're having within the district. It is just as much your program as it is ours, probably more. We like to tout that. This is something I don't, I don't want to go labor-intensive into, but it's a software package that we use where we're tracking and monitoring in real time all of your facilities. And I apologize if I'm speaking about something that you, that you already know. Smart meters are a big part of tracking your energy use. You can get a meter put on your building that tracks every 15 minutes so you can see those anomalies when they come up. I think you have some, I think you're looking towards, moving towards some. That is something that we're going to look at aggressively to find your high-use buildings, your most inefficient buildings, and we will put those smart meters on your facilities so we can track that in real time. What that means is if an air conditioner, if a unit, a school is kicking on at 2:00 in the morning or whatever it is, sensor problem, somebody changed the schedule, didn't change it back, nobody's going to know that that building was running at 2:00 in the morning unless somebody walks through that building at 2:00 in the morning. These audits that we do, these energy specialists are going to do copious, copious amounts of audits in your buildings on weekends to make sure that the program or the equipment is running like it should. All of this is in real time, all of this is available to Teresa, John, James, anybody on your staff that wants to get alerts, wants to find out what's going on each individual building down to the meter, this is all at your fingertips. The billing process for this, one of the big things, and I hate to just throw out numbers, but I think we recouped almost $50 million last year in billing anomalies with our partners. Billing anomalies being that we looked at why was there an 18% increase between January of 2018 and January of 2017 when the weather was about to sign and there was no major event? We look at all these bills. We will be the ones that take your bills and put them into the system. That burden on whoever that is on within the district, if the district will allow, then becomes our burden because we are looking to find those areas where there may be billing mistakes, there may be overcharges. I don't know how accounts payable does it here, but the way it worked in, when I was with City Montgomery, they got a bill and they paid it. They didn't have somebody that was manually looking at the bills for discrepancies or anomalies. That's something that we do thoroughly within this program. Some of our partners, regional partners, Marion County's been a partner with us for many, many years, Nassau County, St. John's, Chukola, Walton, Pinellas of course, Charlotte, down in Port Charlotte, Clay County is a partner of ours. These are just to give you some of the numbers of where those districts are right now, cost per square foot. This comes off the data that you turn into the Florida Department of Education. There are differences in what these districts pay per kilowatt hour, there is no doubt about it. I won't stand there and say that there isn't. We reduce your energy consumption and that comes with a dollar value to it. So we average 25, 26% in the southeast, a little higher in the northeast, it varies across the country, but we feel strongly that we can get this program 25, 30% reduction with our program. We would not be here if we did not think we would. Some numbers here, this is what, this is what we had calculated that we project to Alachua County that we will be able to do for you. Over the five years, we feel like that the net savings, net total savings to the district will be $6.4 million. You see how it starts in the first year and ramps up. This is what we feel with the climate of your organization, with the success that we've had in various districts that are neighboring, with your square footage and with your expense, this is what we feel like we can produce. When I came to y'all a year ago or so, I think it was the first Zoom I ever did, right after the pandemic started, we had a 50/50 gain share proposal. That is what the business model has been for a long time, is that it's a 50/50 split and we guarantee that you will cover the cost of the program with your savings. We have changed that model. Dr. Spears, who owns this company, has decided that we want to get cash into our partners, into the districts as soon as we can, as opposed to stretching it out over the five years. This slide right here shows what we project, that the annual fees that you will pay us in green compared to what I brought to y'all the last time that seemed red. It's a, it's a very different number to where it's about a 65, 35 split as opposed to a 50/50 split.
So read that. Sir? Year one, 393,000.
That, that would be the fee that would be paid to us.
And what's ours then? Are we getting savings from the 1.126?
Yeah, if I may go to the next slide, I think I'll answer that a little better. These are the net savings that we are saying for the district right here as compared to our fees. That's 1.26 after you have paid our fees, after the fees have been.
After.
Yes, sir. And again, to the 6.3 million. I show this slide because we're very transparent on what the program consists of. If we look at this, the total project investment for the district and then the net savings to the client is spelled out here. 393,800 is the fee of the first year and you see it incrementally goes up. The energy specialist at the top, we'll hire two at about $101,000. So in the aggregate for the first year, it would be about $40,000 a month. $40,000 a month and then it incrementally goes up as the projected net savings goes up. But at no point in this program, at any point, will you ever be in the red with synergistic. None of, not one partner that we have has ever paid a dime more than they have saved.
All right, well, the 20,000, where is that now? Read, let me read this with you.
Okay.
He's got a gross savings year one, 1.648 million, right?
Yes, sir. Gross savings, 1.648, that's correct.
After we take out your net savings, the 1.126, right?
That is correct.
Now, okay, and we're, okay, and then we're going to, we'll be in the, in the black 6.359 at the end of.
6.359 at the end of five years, that is correct. We're looking at, we're looking at almost $11 million projected over five years gross savings.
Hey, I like to look at, you know, I see, I saw an overage with our, 75% of our, we have one company, 75%, you're aware of that. Do you look at the companies we have too?
For utility cost?
Wait a minute. It's on, I think.
I can hear you.
I guess I can't talk. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
So this is, yeah, okay. All the savings, we got a lot, because we got a lot to have savings from. That's why I'm just trying to think.
I'm sorry, I'm having.
You're going to give us 25% no matter what we are paying.
On the rates?
Yeah.
It doesn't have to, we don't look at the rates. We look at what you.
No, you got to look at the rates because that's the amount of money you're looking at. 25% of 7. something million dollars.
That's right.
They come from those rates.
We look at the history of the data that y'all gave us, that you have been paying for your rates and we are extrapolating that out as if nothing changes.
Okay.
Now that will adjust your savings.
Right, but you'll still be 25, you'll still be the same percentages that are here.
We are, we still, no matter what your rate is, no matter what your change is, we guarantee that you will, we will cover the fees of the program.
But can I, can I, can I take these savings? If we were to, let's say we reduce $400,000.
Okay.
We should take, I could take these and transfer that to the same percentages and get this lower amount with the same percentage savings?
If we save, well, if we were to only save $400,000 in the first year.
No, let's say we get the bills reduced. If we got the bills, anything, anything we get the bills reduced, would we get these same percentages?
I guess I'm not, yes, any reduction in the amount.
If I take the amount of money, you took this amount of money out of what we're paying now, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If we reduced that, say 400,000.
Right.
We'd have the same ratios?
Yes, that is correct.
Percentage ratios, whatever you want to call it.
Right, that is our goal, to get the reduction at that same ratio, that is correct.
Okay.
And if that ratio does not come out that, that you were in the black, we'll pay the difference. Yes, sir, you're exactly right. Whatever that ratio is, is going to stay the same regardless of the rates, we're just guaranteeing that you'll never pay more than our fees, period.
Okay. All right, let me think. I'll let you chew on that.
Dr. Holson, let's let him finish. If you're finished.
Yes, ma'am, that was my last, last slide.
All right, now we are open for all questions at this point.
Madam Chairwoman, may I add one more thing that I forgot?
Yes.
I apologize. This is something that comes with our program that is enhancing the facility and maintenance of the buildings. We put out a COVID-19 CDC, ASHRAE and OSHA standard guideline for our facilities. It is the bible of what we do and it is what we use when we are working with your facility team on ventilation, air pressure, economizing, those kind of things. So we are constantly looking at ways to optimize the health of your buildings at no cost. It is part of our program, when I say no cost, I mean any additional cost. An outside agency, if you would come in and have them do that, we are going to provide that as part of what we do.
And you'll be dealing with, you know, we're in a building program right now.
Yes, sir.
You're aware of that.
Yes, sir.
And you'll be dealing closely with our people.
We will be, we will be third-party reps on any equipment, lighting, any purchase that you're looking at for your new builds, vendor neutral, it makes, we have no affinity to anybody, but we will send a team of engineers here, just like we did to the courthouse in Alachua County to advise on what their retrofit should be so that they're not putting in a 10-ton chiller more than they need for the building because the architect said that's what, because he didn't pay the percentage of the price. If you reduce your footprint, we will help you with the reduction of that footprint, giving you optimal ways that we feel like. If we're looking at the buildings, you have after-school programs, you have weekend programs, you have community services that use your facilities. I don't know if you charge or not, a lot of that is in-kind services, I mean exactly, I've been there. What we're going to be able to do is we're going to build an envelope of every school and building in the district, the envelope, the entire envelope. We'll be able to tell you what it's actually costing you in energy to have a program at that school, compare it with another school and be able to choose the more efficient facility if you so desire for that activity. We're going to be able to tell you what you're actually spending on utilities for the church or the Kiwanis Club to use that elementary school two times a month on the weekend if you so desire to be compensated for that. So we're going to get down on each single building to where we know everything about. If you wanted to do a lighting upgrade of this facility, we'll look at the pattern of what you've spent over the course of two years on this facility. We'll take the R factor, if you want to change from T8s to LEDs, and we'll be able to give you what the cost of that is going to be in kilowatt hours and what your ROI is on that. So we're partnering with you on all of your construction, upgrade, enhancement programs to make sure that if you would like, you're getting the advice that, that you need.
And the next thing I'm doing, these smart meters, that interests me. You're going to be involved, because we get our meters too from these, I know from GRU, we. three quarters of our schools, they also are meters. You're gonna look at the meters that we're, we have now?
We will look into the buildings that you have that do not have sub-meters or smart meters. So if it doesn't have a smart meter, some of the equipment in your schools has an internal way to regulate every 15 minutes what the spend is. But if you have an older school that has no way of doing that, and all you're doing is getting a bill every 30 days and then trying to analyze that, yes, those are the ones that we will look at, putting smart.
Well, you'll look at what we're being charged for those meters too, right?
Pardon me?
You'll look at that, what we're being charged to install those meters.
Right, but I'm saying that that would be.
Well, that's important too, I think.
Right, that would be a partnership to where we would look at putting the cost of those smart meters.
You would.
If it benefit, if it behooves both of us.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yes. Yeah, if we see those high areas where we, we need to be more granular with the energy consumption, we're not, we're at 16%, and wanna be at 21% at Gainesville High School, we're gonna find measures that we can get to that 21%.
Right, because then, one of the biggest things, 10 years ago, we had people leaving their air conditioner on full blast for the weekends, and those were the ones that had the highest bills.
Right. It, it sounds, it sounds very elementary about, people think this is a turn the lights off program and shut the door when you leave program. You've got almost 6 million square feet in a county that's pretty large. I've talked to Teresa, I've talked to John, they, they don't have the capacity to granularly look at these facilities for those anomalies where the air is running. They, they just don't. That is what, that is, that is the reason that this program works. That is the reason that Clay County has saved $7 million in five years.
Well, the way we did it is, we see the bill was out of, out of control, we knew something was wrong.
Yes, sir.
And you, this way, you're continually monitoring all.
We, we are augmenting the good work that y'all are already doing, just giving her two more, four more feet and four more hands that, that are, their only job is to look at this.
Right, well, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Um, colleague, unfortunately, the lights are not working, so I'm gonna start on the end with Mrs. McGraw and come across. But Mr. Jones, thank you so much. The energy in this building is certainly working, because it's cold in here. Mrs. McGraw?
I have a question. Um, in order for us to, you know, I'm all for monitoring, right, but, but not, but I know we have some other things we gotta get working before we get anything monitored. But for us to contract with you, what, what is our cost upfront? I mean, we were to say, to move forward with this, what, what is the cost to the district upfront?
There, there is no upfront cost.
So there's no upfront cost?
No, there's no capital outlay, there's no expenditure, and, and to your point, all of this, we're talking about doing, you got 30 schools, it's gonna take about five or six months for us to wrap ourselves. The first thing we're gonna do is triage and analyze every one of your buildings. There is no two buildings that are alike. The one that was built in 1920 is not gonna have the same envelope as the one that was built in 2015. So you can't just have a boilerplate program. We're gonna go in and individually build a model of those buildings so, as you said, we are able to look at individual problems that they have.
Yeah, because we, right now, we have some things that are, are not working at all, like indoor quality is a big concern, so that's how I'm saying, what is my concern? What is our cost upfront? And then making sure we have stuff working, you know, before you can start monitoring.
That is, that is, the very first thing we do, and I apologize I let you come back, but you're exactly right. For us to stand here and say, we'll start day one, save you 25%. And I, I know that, because we're not, we have to go in and find, and I had somebody tell me one time, when I had this program, we had a, a facility that was running 24/7, and I said, I've bought into this, I'm all in, and he said, I'm afraid if we shut it off, it'll never come back on.
Right.
We understand the dynamic of the public school facility situation, that's all we do. So yes, we'll find those areas. But what I'm telling you, at 6.4, 10 and 1/2 total, that's as if you never replace a piece of equipment in the life of this program. If you do decide to take a high school and retrofit it with LEDs, we'll redo the baseline, the measurement baseline, because we will not take any credit for a capital expense that you did. I just want you to be sure that, if, if you're saving $100,000 a year on a building because you put LED lights in it, we're not gonna say that we deserve a percentage of that. So we think, trust that measurement verification of the area to make sure that we're not grating our own project.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mrs. McGraw, I'm sorry, I, I should have gone with our citizen input, um, before we started discussing, and I do apologize for that. Mr. Coles?
I'm going to provide instructions for participating virtually during citizen, the citizen input portion of today's workshop. Uh, this workshop is being streamed live for public viewing on YouTube and will be made available on the district's website. The workshop is also being streamed through Zoom as an alternative method to provide comment during citizen input. The Zoom meeting ID for this workshop is 883-7215-0001. Zoom participants can raise their hand if they wish to comment during citizen input. A person using Zoom on their phone can raise their hand by pushing star nine. If participating online, you can click the raise hand option on the participant's page to let us know that you wish to speak. When it's time for public input, I will read the person's name or the last four numbers of their phone number and indicate that that person may now speak. All Zoom participants will remain muted until it is their turn to speak. To unmute your line, you can either click the unmute button on your computer or press star six on your phone. Each person will be given three minutes to speak, and after three minutes, an alarm will sound, letting them know that the time is up. That concludes my instructions. Currently, we do not have any attendees raising their hand virtually, though we might have some attending.
Thank you, Mr. Coles. And I do not have any forms from our citizens here in the building. So with that, Mr. Hyatt.
Uh, thank you, Dr. McNeil. Well, I, I do appreciate you not wearing the Auburn tines like you did a year ago, uh, but.
Early Zoom mistake.
Yeah, well, but I, I was, uh, I, a, a year ago, I was very impressed. And to me, it seems like a win-win situation. Uh, you know, starting with the fact that, that the idea is to add, uh, capacity to our staff, to our professionals, uh, for them to do what, what they're committed to doing. Uh, I think, um, we can all agree that Ms. Burling Wood, since she's been with the district, uh, has done an incredible job in changing the culture, not to mention saving money. So, so we want to, of course, continue that. So, um, I'm pretty much, uh, looking at this as, as a win-win, a good step for the district. Uh, I would like if, um, Ms. Burling Wood, or Mr. Reller, Mr. Calvert, or anyone else, if they had a, a, a brief statement, or, and when I say brief, I'm talking to a couple, a few sentences, that, how you feel about us going into this agreement.
Do you want them to speak before the other questions, or would you want?
Well, I.
Okay, go ahead.
It's up to you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Sure, so I do have some thoughts, and I have Teresa here that, um, can kinda jump into. I did take, take my jacket off, because it's hot in here in Eastwood. At, at any rate, um, so yeah, I think this is a, a good creative solution. What I like the most about it, obviously, is the budget neutrality, as, uh, for remember, Hyatt mentioned, it's kinda like win-win. Um, I think the other pieces that are really neat tie-ins is the curriculum piece. Um, there's a huge emphasis on STEAM, STEM, um, and they have a curriculum that I feel like we could really embed to what we're already doing to provide some kinda real-world application and example, uh, for our kids. Um, also, it's a really, uh, a good play for us, how it ties into our renovation, their expertise in terms of knowing, um, you know, the energy efficiency and, and how that can kinda tie into what we're doing, and them being a third party, obviously, we have a ton of folks behind me with, you know, collectively 100 years of experience working on this. But it's always as good to get an independent, um, analyst that can kinda look at this stuff, an engineer, and kinda work with our architects, because as we mentioned, um, you know, sometimes there's scope creep and things that could kinda come into the picture that we don't want, and it's good to have not only our crew, but an additional set of eyes to review this stuff, to make sure we're making purchases that are consistent, uh, with protecting the taxpayer funds. Um, also, I think, you know, the, the piece on the COVID, of course, that wasn't a huge topic of discussion, well, I guess it was last time, but, um, the, the, the outside air coming in and how we address the water, the, the air quality issues is really important, particularly now. It was important two years ago as well. Uh, but I think, you know, they can kinda provide some assistance on that area. They're gonna be able to identify with their technology, you know, these units that are really inefficient, the ones that aren't running, the ones that are running but limping, and allow us to be pretty specific in our approach, um, in terms of what we're replacing and when, with clear rationale of improving energy efficiency. Uh, just in general, it's, it's, in my opinion, a great program. I've spoken with, I think, 10 CFOs at school districts, all very supportive, I spoke with my counterpart at the county, who they've been with, I think, a little over a year now, very supportive. So I think it's definitely, definitely a good option, uh, for the board. I did want to ask Teresa to come up if she had any additional thoughts on that, on the program.
Right. Um, so Synergistic is, uh, one of our Better Buildings Challenge partners with the Department of Energy, so, uh, that's a pretty good thing. And as we move the district forward with modernization plans, we're not just focusing anymore on our kilowatt hours, we're gonna focus on our KBTUs, which is our gas and propane, as well as our water, you know, because you guys have tasked us with doing more water, um, conservation. But one of the things that I really like about, uh, the thought of this is, when I think about my grandkids, they're all gonna be in a system, a building automation system. They're either gonna be in space, they're gonna be in a building where everything is controlled by something, and if we can start hearing the future to understand that whole building automation, how the building works as part of their functional environment, I think we would do all of our children a great step up in the world, because that's where it's all gonna be in 15, 20 years, either here or in space. And when you think about, everything in space is a building automation system, your water system, your electric system, your sewer system, everything has to function together for them to survive. So I'm, I'm just kind of excited about moving that part of the STEM and, and getting kids involved in that to change how they think about the building that they live in. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, um, Mr. Hyatt. I'm looking now, I know Dr. Paulson has had time. Mrs. Surtin?
Um, yeah, I did have a couple of questions, thank you. Um, Mr. Jones, could you tell, you touched on the smart meters, who would be responsible for the installation of those? Did, did I understand you to say your company would be, or would it be the utility, the provider, or what?
Well, and, and that varies throughout the country, so what we would do is, we would pick up your providers and find out what their process is. Once we identify, once we've been in this program for a little while, and Teresa and her team, they, they're gonna be able to point me to the buildings that, that are limping the most. Then we would look at that, and we would find out, is that something that's done on the local economy with local electricians, electricians? Is it something that the energy company provides? So that, when we get there, to be honest with you, I think, they told me in Clay County, I don't know how much different Clay and Marion is from Colatua, I think it's about $1,500 a meter for the life of the meter. So we're not gonna ask the district to do that. That is going to completely be something, if we decide we can't get to where we need to be at this high school, we're gonna, we're gonna go that route. But that would never be something that we said, well, you said you were gonna put smart meters in, and why we're not doing very well, not at all.
Since we're, excuse me, can you wait till I get done?
As long as, as long as you can follow up on your own question. Okay. I wasn't, I was asking, I just.
Go ahead, what's, what's the follow-up question?
You know, are they gonna, you, I think you asked, are they gonna ask for all, or they're gonna buy? It should be clear to me, if we have some people, uh, if we want those smart meters, I wanna be real skit, real specific about them, smart meters.
Correct.
Because that's where you're at, right?
Yeah.
Be a little more specific.
Okay, again, that is something that we will look at as this program matures, but I am telling you today that we will never say to you, you need to put a smart meter on. If it is determined between your team and our team that we're gonna get a better benefit on a high school, if we get interval data in some shape, form, or fashion, then we will provide that, and we will pay for soup to nuts on what it costs. We, we won't ever ask you to burden that share with us if we decide, now, we're not gonna go put smart meters on every facility in Gainesville in the first month, but as we find those through our studies and our matrices and our analytics, yes, that would be something that we choose to do.
Um, my other question is, since we're in the midst of rebuilding and refurbishment of the district buildings, and we have all of this old equipment now, how will we calculate the savings by which your profit split will be determined? You know, we got all this old equipment, we've been told by our staff here, and they've told the citizens that, and that's why we got the sales tax, you know, we're in the midst of doing that, so we have, um, high consumption, I would presume.
Yes, sir.
That's why you're here now. Um, so how, and we've got four new, or three new projects that'll be coming online, how are we gonna determine this baseline of savings, um, you know, consumption? And you can say, well, we, 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 um, are drove or, or the cause of this lower energies, you know? Not just those big projects, but even AC news, you know, we get things on our agenda where we're doing upgrades on HVAC systems at different schools and things like that, so.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a very important question. Yes, there is a baseline, as in any energy management program, whether it's equipment, it's behavioral, whatever it is, you have to set up, you have to weigh yourself before you go to the gym to know if you have any success. As you start upgrading your equipment, equipment has what's called an R factor on it, and it is the manufacturer spec of how much energy that piece of equipment is gonna use. We then extrapolate that out and compare it to an average use as it was prior to the new equipment, and we will be able to adjust what the reduction in savings is off of the new equipment compared to the old. So we won't be measuring, if you reduce it 10%, we won't be measuring what the number was when you had the 1950 piece of equipment. We're gonna see what the new equipment did, and it's probably gonna be about six or seven. So there, there is, there is adjustments for new equipment, there is adjustments for weather days. If we have an unusually warm, and, and people think, well, what's the difference between two or three degrees, uh, you know, for 10 days in a month? Well, it is when there's 6 million square feet. We are constantly, it is done by a third-party company, it's called Energy Cap. Energy Cap is the industry-leading Department of Justice and Department of Energy measurement and verification software that is autonomous from Synergistic. That's when I was telling Dr. Simon that we, we are not going to tell you what we've saved you. There's gonna be a third card, third-party accounting firm that validates this to say what the true savings was, just as you do if you go out and get people to, um, evaluate your educators. Your internal staff is not gonna tell you how good they're doing. This is a third-party autonomous from us that, um, Ms. Surtin is the one that is telling us what those adjustments should be. You should not be getting credit for this because they did that. So that is, that is a third party that does that. But that is a big part of the questions that people get, and it, it's very forward-leaning, because if you replace all of your equipment, the savings that you get is more percentage to you than it is us, because it was the equipment that you put in.
Um, and the other question about there being no upfront fee, you've already, you've addressed that. Um, I guess I'm trying to figure out too, and the payment structure, but that'll be more in, um, you know, um, in the contract that would be forthcoming, but.
Yes, sir.
I, I, my, my concern is, is we've heard that there's so much obsolete and old equipment that's just on it, you know, that we have once in place now and that's running, and until we can get through our refurbishment of a lot of this stuff here, I'm just trying to figure out how we're gonna come to a baseline and, and see how we're going for it.
Right, but once, i, i, if this comes to fruition, we'll go back and look probably four years of energy consumption data, and, and as Ms. Burling Wood said, not only electricity, but your gas and water, uh, people would be surprised how much waste that goes unnoticed with water, because you can't tell if it's busted underground, so.
I have one thing for you on that. All of our data. All of our data is on the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Portfolio Manager website from 2010 forward, so we have it documented, and it's also part of the Better Buildings Challenge, documented there, everything we've used since 2010 to now for every site, school site. So we have all that data. We'll go back.
Which is unusual, because most districts are not that comprehensive.
So it's good we have a lot of historical data usage on each of the buildings, and I guess, you know, like we, to me, that gets thrown out, not thrown out, but kind of put a peg in it, say for Metcalf, because so much of that building has been rebuilt, and we're starting from nothing at Metcalf, even Bishop. But then, you know, you referenced Gainesville High School, it's, they're right now replacing, if I recall correctly, several projects, HVAC projects at that site there. And to me, that should decrease the energy usage there, because it's more efficient equipment. So it's good that we have the historical perspective, we can see the efficiency of the new equipment, but then there are other buildings where we just have all of this old equipment, and I'm trying to figure out how Synergistic and even its processes are going, with two additional people are going to improve the consumption at all of the old buildings and with the old equipment, you know.
Right. And I see what you're saying, so if you have thirty buildings, and we have two energy specialists dedicated to this, they're going to be constantly moving on a cycle, visiting those. Right now, I just made the phone call in Clay, they have thirty-three loggers set up in schools in the district. So one of the big things that they're going to do is, they're going to come into a school and put what they call HOBO, HOBO is just a brand, so we're going to monitor the temperature, humidity, and air quality in your school for three or four days. Then we'll move on to, after we take that analytics and that data, to see what time of the day the air quality is getting below the standard we want, we'll make some adjustments, we'll come back and measure again. But they're going to be constantly moving around your facilities. It's able to be done, it is. They're held to a very high standard. One thing about this energy specialist I want to be clear about, we're not going to bring somebody from Bayonne, New Jersey into Central Florida to change behavior. We're, we will hire somebody from Alachua County, two people from Alachua County. The young lady that's in Alachua County now, she's from, she's from, I think she's actually from Waldo, but she is a local girl that knows the people in the county, knows the character and the culture. We do our best, our best energy specialists are retired educators, or maybe those that are retired coaches. It is an interesting dynamic, because the classroom involvement, the student involvement, the education of what we're doing is a big part of what we do. We've got to have that type of personality to be that person that's out there working.
Thank you. Those are all the questions.
Thank you.
Dr. Paulson?
We'll go back to Gainesville High School. What are we, Gainesville High School has three stories, right? What are they supposed to be done? Sorry? And I arbitrarily just said Gainesville High School, I didn't. No, 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 I'm just, I'm just thinking long. Okay. You know, they didn't, they didn't have an organization in nineteen eighty, they've got window units, they're very inefficient. Yes. And the thing is, you work, and you go to that school a couple of years, and just after that time, what, what year is this one? I'm sorry, you didn't.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to look it up, I have not memorized the dates.
But anyway, you don't want to replace it with, because it's, it's been the last thirty-four years, or I just don't have time to look it up. That'll all be working together, a lot of people, and the only part that's real, and we're going to have in four years, we're going to build a new building. Right. Yeah, we will not, we will not replace any equipment, we will not be a part of any equipment replacement that you do physically. We will be there to guide and mentor you and advise you on what we feel, with the sixty-five engineers that we have employed, what the historical, their subject matter expert knowledge would suggest. But, you know, even if you don't replace. They say they'll have five years, they'll have five years here. Well, we hope we have more than five. We. No, I'm talking about, they, Gainesville High has five years, they're going to build a three-story building. Okay. And there was a big, um, comparison compared to the windows. Right. We would be with you through the lead building process, through the EPA, the Energy Star Program process, the certification, you know, we would, we would be there as a third-party advisor to any upgrades and equipment. Well, and the upgrade, we need to help, you know, five years, Jack? Yes, yes. Because that's, that's where it works, you don't want to put something that you've got to tear down. That's, that's exactly right. It would be. At any time, you don't want to continue putting in. We would, we would be giving that advice, that's a great point, you wouldn't want to put hundreds of thousands of dollars into a school that you're going to, that you can't re-harvest that equipment. And if you have schools that have window units, and if you have schools that have old equipment, which I know you do, that's just the way it is, I'm from Alabama, believe me, I get it. The reduction we're getting with your old equipment is better than no reduction at all. So we're not going to just look at a building and say, well, that's old, and those are window units, we can't do anything with that. Absolutely not. It stays on the audit schedule, it stays on the air quality control schedule. Mold is a huge factor in the southeast, I'm well aware of that. The document that I showed you earlier on our moisture management plan, we have copious steps on where we find mold issues. If we see that the dew point or the wet bubble has gotten into a dangerous zone, it is immediate notification to one of our engineers to come in and start doing testing and sampling, as well as notifying your group. So, you know, the old adage about to get rid of mold, you just got to turn the air conditioner on and cool it down, and that's, that's not the way it works. So, yeah, we're constantly looking at that.
Mr. Jones, again, thank you so much for the presentation. I don't have a question per se, but I have some comments, because I've been around in Alachua County for forty-some-odd years in this system. And every time I look around, it's an HVAC problem, and it's probably some problems with lighting and other items as well. But I love the fact that you said, we guarantee savings. However, with, and we, everyone has mentioned, from Ms. McGraw to Ms. Surtin, Dr. Paulson, everyone has said about the older equipment that we have in place, and you said, from Alabama, you know what we're struggling with here. I think that before we go with you, we've got to spend money in order to get the savings that we need from Synergistics, period. Although you just stated, there is a reduction, we could, we would even see a reduction with our old equipment. But to me, sitting on this board, that's not good enough, because we know, we don't have to have a computer to tell us, we know the systems that are not working. We know how frequently the mechanics or the techs are from CIVIA over in these schools having to repair the HVAC system. So I would think, and I don't know if that's in this, I'm looking at Ms. Rela, I don't know if that's a part of what we would be doing before we go with your company in order to make sure that we're not spending money that we shouldn't be spending, but I know we need to spend money in order to fix our equipment, in order to get the savings that you're talking about here. So I'm glad to see you getting it up, because I, I want to know, have some answers.
I think that's a, that's a great mindset, and I'll say something real quick before that.
Sure.
Your footprint right now is this big, just think about your environmental usage is this big, and you're talking about replacing equipment to cover this size footprint. The most successful partners we have is, they go, they come with us, get their footprint smaller, and then start buying the equipment, so that they're not having a carbon or an energy footprint that's this big. Get it shrunk and down, get that twenty-five, twenty-six percent reduction in your usage, and your equipment purchase doesn't have to be as large.
You know, I'm an educator, and not what you just said about footprint and getting it smaller in order to see the savings, he'll, Rela will have to talk to me, Mr. Coward is going to have to talk to me, I see Mr. Nix back there, Ms. Teresa Spurling. I need, I need help, you lost me, because footprint can mean a whole lot to me, but not the footprint in terms of building. Dr. Simon, and then Mr. Rela.
I'll let you go.
So it's a, it's a, it's a great question. I think, you know, just like any super, in my opinion, super complicated scenario situation we find ourselves in with, you know, a very decentralized organization with, you know, multiple units of air conditioning, lighting, multiple different ages, there's so many variables. But when you find yourselves in situations like that, there's not like a one-size-fits-all solution. So I think, you know, what, what we, what we need to look at is, obviously Synergistics does behavior modification, so regardless of what our units are or become, their program is largely looking at data, of course, but also working with employees, making sure we're modifying the behavior of our employees, and that's really where the savings comes from, from their product. In addition to that, you know, as you mentioned, and we all get the emails and the calls from teachers, the AC's down, the AC's broken, and we have an opportunity here with the sales tax to really write some of those situations, but, you know, it's really powerful to have information, so if we have the data from the energy software that says, you know, Building Two at Erby Elementary is running really poorly, or the data screams that, or is not running correctly, or it continuously goes down, it allows to make really good database decisions on, in terms of how we prioritize units, because I think to do all of our HVAC needs, it would probably take the entire referendum, just to be perfectly honest with you. But we don't have that kind of luxury, so we need to be very specific and methodical in our approach. And with me, it's always important to have data, I think their data will help guide us into the direction in terms of what units need to be addressed. They also help a lot with the concerns and complaints of employees. With their boots on the ground, obviously, we get, and Teresa and her office, get a ton of complaints from employees, and it's really difficult to address all those expeditiously. I mean, if you're having an AC issue at your house or at your work, like to you, that is the most important thing, that's your environment you're in all day long, and you're teaching a class and everyone's distracted. So those issues are super important, but it's difficult with the size of our county and the work personnel to address all those. They'll also bolster our efforts and actually go out to the schools, put in those HOBO meters, and actually do some research, and put some information, some data to the conversation. But I guess that's a really long-winded answer of saying, it's not, in my mind, it's not either or, or one needs to become before the other. The energy savings piece is general fund dollars, so anytime we have an opportunity to save general fund dollars, I think that's something the board should strongly consider. That's who we negotiate raises with, that's how we expand programs, address literacy, I mean, it's kind of our pot of money, and it's not getting any bigger. So I guess just to summarize that up, I think, you know, I think we should be doing both, personally. But having, having an organization like Synergistics on board will allow us to, like, let the data drive the conversation and help us know which units, in addition to our staff, which need to be addressed and prioritize.
Thank you. Dr. Simon?
Well, I probably should have spoken first, because you said a lot of my talking points, but I would agree. So I think the thing is, is no matter what, we know we need to change human behavior and how we're interacting with our energy usage, and lighting I find pretty interesting because of just like LED versus fluorescents. So we do have changes in behavior, and I think we'll see the deductions, well, I know we'll see the deductions, and the percentage, my understanding is, it's based on the energy consumption that year, and then that's when the percentage discussions occur, as far as what Synergistic takes from that, correct? Like, every year, we talk about how the savings work.
You'll get a fee scheduled, yes, ma'am.
Right.
And that's, that's none, that, that doesn't, that's not fluid. The savings that you get on top of that is, once we start increasing our percentage, is just more to the difference.
Right.
Ours is that.
So I think what we're going to run into is that they do have the built-in capacity of when we make building improvements, because, I mean, you're in relationships that last for years and years and years with districts who are constantly adding buildings or removing, so it will fluctuate with us. And since there isn't this additional, there's not a fee that goes in, we kind of, you know, there's savings that occurs, and we're splitting the savings, so I think that's important. But I also, the data-driven decision-making is incredibly important, especially as we're looking at our facilities, and we're doing this comprehensive rezoning, because we do know that we have certain schools that replacing the HVAC is going to be pricey, and it also is perhaps not even going to really address what the school really needs. And so this is going to help us with prioritizing, like, really, where are our schools and our energy systems that we need to examine if this is even, is it salvageable, is it not salvageable, how can we use our money best? And I think that, right now, although we do have some data, we don't have a huge amount of data, and I think having more data will allow us to interact with our facilities much better. On top of that, and I, this is with Teresa Spurling Wood's comment, I think it's pretty exciting, the curriculum component that they're adding into this, he didn't discuss it too much at length, but there's ways that we can actually bring this into our classrooms and help really shape. I mean, we're talking about behavioral management of adults, but also helping our children, and so I think there's a value added in there that we shouldn't ignore. That's it.
Closing remarks. Seeing none, I would imagine that when we put this on the agenda for a vote, we'll have more discussion, I'm sure. This gives us an opportunity today to talk with staff after this report. I'm sure I have some questions for Mrs. Spurling Wood, Suzanne Nguyen, I see Mr. Coward, Mr. Nix, and I will be asking those questions before it's back on the agenda for a decision. But we certainly need to have the, all of the data that Mr. Rela mentioned, we certainly need to have that. Anytime, as he says, to eliminate all of these problems coming out of our general fund, we need to do that as well. So my thing, my key thing that I'm leaving here with today is that the savings is going over the five-year period of whatever that you showed in the chart. It's going to be astronomical, it's going to be huge for us, and I look forward to having more discussion with staff. But thank you ever so much, and go Gators.
Well, thank, thank you, Dr. McNeely, and Dr. Simon, thank you, and to the board, I appreciate you letting me talk. I believe in this program, I, I, I think it's, it's something that, that works, and it is tried and true, and I would love to, to come back and talk to you more about it, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wise? I didn't know if anyone needed a break before Mrs. Wise. Ms. Wise, we're going to take five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Give me time to find the presentation.
Want me to wait for Dr. Simon or are we?
Okay.
Oh, she's here, sorry. All right. Well, I'm not sure how I get to follow the act of how to save over $6 million. I would have to bring you, but thank you, Dr. McNeely, Dr. Simon and board members for the opportunity to spend a little time this afternoon talking about one of my favorite topics, state assessments. I had the opportunity to collaborate with Mr. Charbonnet and his department, Mr. Berry, Mr. Stanford and Mr. Coles and bring together some information to kind of help explain what we'll be working on with our schools this spring. Um, again, there's a lot of statutory language that comes into play as it relates to state assessment and that 1008.22 specifically speaks to the primary purpose of the student assessment program is to provide student achievement and learning gains data to students, parents, teachers, administrators and district staff. And of course, this is a lengthy piece of statutory language, but I just wanted to lift some of those pieces that I think it's important for us to know. And, um, one of the most pressing is that participation in the assessment program is mandatory for all school districts and for all students attending public schools. And it's the Commissioner of Education who establishes and publishes that statewide testing schedule that I actually referenced, uh, last night when we talked about our school calendar because it does also drive our school calendar. This language also includes, um, those testing requirements that are tied for our students who are earning their standard high school diplomas. Um, there's lots of different pieces of statutory language that are tied with state assessment. And this piece, 1008.34 specifically outlines the purposes for the statewide assessment program. And among other things, we know that they report the achievement levels, uh, learning gains and learning growth for our students. They're also used to calculate a district grade and they're used to calculate individual school grades. And nested within those school grades are the requirements currently that each school must assess 95% of their students and sets those grading components of achievement, learning gains, gains of the lowest quartile, acceleration and graduation rates for our secondary schools. There's also language in Florida statutes about how, uh, state assessment is a part of our teacher evaluation procedures. And for all teachers, at least one-third of their evaluation must be based upon the performance of their students. And, uh, for our teachers who teach ELA in math, who have a state test associated with it, um, this must be used as the student performance part of their evaluation. And that's calculated using a formula that takes into consideration a student's prior academic performance. So when you hear about, um, teachers' VAM scores, it comes from those teachers who teach courses that have a state test. All of our teachers have a student data component as part of their appraisal, but for our, um, ELA and math teachers in grades three through 10, this is the part that the statute requires us to use. Um, we also are very familiar, I think, with the statutory language as it relates to our third grade students. And in order to be promoted to grade four, students must score a level two or higher on the ELA test in grade three. There is some language in this statute that allows us to exempt students from mandatory retention based on their FSA score, um, if they have one of these good cause exemptions. And some of the reasons, um, I won't read this entire paragraph to you, have to do with students who have an IEP or a 504 plan for our ELL students or students who receive an acceptable score on one of our state-approved alternative assessments or portfolio assessments. And so that's another pathway to promotion for our third graders. Now, just last month, the middle of the month, because of, um, the testing window that had been published and the requirements around that, we did receive, um, emergency order that is, um, giving us some more flexibility with the testing window. So the flexibility is in, um, the length of time that the tests are available to us to be administered, not whether they will be administered. Um, it also gave us some flexibility in scheduling, allowing us to administer tests beyond the normal school day or even on a Saturday. So the testing, uh, windows begin, and most of these have been extended by approximately two weeks, begin first with our, uh, third grade ELA and reading test and that window is from April 5th to the 30th. The fourth through the 10th grade writing test also takes place during this time. So this is about a double, doubling of the length of the window. Our grades four through six ELA, three through six math, grades five and eight science, those are all paper-based tests and those may be administered between May 3rd and May 28th. And then beginning also on May 3rd, but running through June 11th, we have our grades seven through 10 ELA in math and all of our end-of-course exams. So that would be civics, algebra, geometry, uh, US history, and those happen May 3rd through June 11th. There's other testing windows and some of those are currently open. In fact, Mr. Charbonnet could probably tell us there's a window for something open at all times. Mr. Charbonnet has lots of windows. And so, uh, currently we are in an FSA, ELA and Algebra I EOC retake. Um, we are, the access test for our English language learners is open basically for almost the whole, um, from the end of January through the end of May. Um, and our, our alternative assessment routes, uh, test for our exceptional education students is open for four weeks, beginning, um, March 1st through May 14th. And then there's the data folio window from March 1st to April 26th.
What's a data folio?
It's another type of alternative assessment for, uh, students who are exempted from state assessment based on their IEPs. So a question that is, um, weighing on a lot of our Digital Academy families' minds is how will we be including, uh, our Digital Academy students safely? Because they are part of our student body that we're required to assess and we're so hopeful for the reasons mentioned, uh, getting that data for students to know how they're progressing, to identify learning losses for our high school students to earn their graduation requirements and for our schools who are working hard on their school grades and our district grade. We are hoping to, um, capture as many of our Digital Academy students in statewide assessment as possible, but we recognize that those families have made the choice to learn at home, um, for very important reasons. And so we're working, uh, very closely, especially with the COVID team, uh, for every school to have a, a site-specific plan for their Digital Academy students. And so our schools will receive a template, uh, they'll work out their plan that's tailored to fit their students and their campuses because there is a great deal of variation among our schools in the number of Digital Academy students that they have, their available space on campus, in terms of the number of computer labs, classrooms, open spaces, et cetera. Um, and then that has to fit within the testing windows for the different tests that the students need, the formats of the tests, whether they're paper-based or computer-based, um, and for those students who have accommodations for assessments. So each school site and the testing coordinators and the administrative team, um, will be working on the plan that they, so that they can meet the needs of their Digital Academy students. There, there's no one-size-fits-all for this. Every school's plan to assess Digital Academy students will include there being no interactions with the brick and mortar students, um, of an emphasis on keeping the testing groups as small and consistent as possible, strict compliance with pre-screening protocols for both the proctors and the students taking the test, and of course enforcement of our mask and face covering policy, um, hand washing before each session, hand sanitizer available as needed, um, strict adherence to social distancing between the students and between the proctor and the students, um, cleaning and disinfecting all of the workspaces and materials before and after the sessions, and options for students to complete two sessions on the same day to reduce the number of days on campus. And that would happen with apparent consent. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Um, other COVID-19 prevention strategies, uh, could include separate assessment times and days for the Digital Academy students. You know, I mentioned outside of school hours, either beyond the normal school day, teacher workdays or Saturdays, um, having computer labs or other classroom spaces dedicated to Digital Academy students only, and, um, really just getting creative with space that's available for paper-based testing, which could also include outdoor spaces or other large areas on campus. So we've gotten, um, some scheduling flexibility as part of that executive order and that's important because our testing schedule used to be very regimented in terms of the grade level, the, um, session of the test, the subject area of the test was all very consistent across the district. And this flexibility will allow those school-based plans, based on the number of their Digital Academy students, the number of spaces they have, to allow the schools to have the flexibility to do what they need to do to meet the needs of their students. So sessions must be completed in order, um, for example, when there's two sessions of an ELA test, they have to be taken session one first, then session two, but the schools have more discretion around makeups. Uh, the sessions do not- The sessions do not have to necessarily be scheduled on consecutive days. Or, as I mentioned a couple of slides ago, you could elect to take two sessions in one day so that you didn't have to come to campus as often. If parents make that selection, we would be sure to plan a healthy break between the sessions. There cannot be three sessions given of the ELA and reading test. However, the math for grades six through eight could be, which, no offense to math teachers, would be my nightmare, but someone might choose that so that they didn't have to make as many trips to campus. So, we will be communicating with our Digital Academy parents and guardians. They're going to receive a letter from their schools with specific details about that test plan that I mentioned earlier, the site-specific plan. You know, what's being done safety-wise, what's the specific testing schedule and the testing protocols, as long as the opt, as well as the options for them to select if they preferred doing multiple sessions in one day to reduce the number of days that they needed to be on campus. So, it didn't save six and a half million dollars. But I hope that I've answered some of your questions about assessment. And Mr. Charbonnet and Mr. Berry and our COVID team are here, Ms. Perry's here. So, really, I'm, we're here to answer any of your questions.
Before we start with questions, Mr. Coles, do you have any citizen input?
We currently have a attendee, but we do not have anyone raising their hand. So I'll use this as an opportunity to remind any viewers that they can join our Zoom and raise their hand if they'd like to contribute. Madam Chair, with your permission perhaps, if someone joins, I can let you know. But right now, we do not have anyone.
All right, and, and seeing none here in the auditorium, we'll start with our questions. Mr. Hyatt?
Thank you, Dr. Daley. You know, we're, we all remember August, and we remember the, sort of the lead-up to Digital Academy. And we have, you know, some, some folks that are pretty adamant, and rightly so, about not coming to Brick and Mortar. Now, we have the, we have the directions from Commissioner Corcoran that every child will be taking the test, every public school child. And that, and that would of course include charters. But if, if you brainstormed any, or, and I, I really like the way this is presented, and particularly with, that everything's adapted to every school, it's not a one-size-fits-all. But if, if you have some pushback of, no, I just can't, I, I just can't bring my child to school, what, what are our options?
We respect that. I, our parents choose every day to send their children to us, Brick and Mortar. And some of our Digital Academy parents are sending their students to campuses for digital-only progress monitoring, for Digital Academy student-only experiences, for hands-on activities with Cade Museum, for instance, or for some socializing with peers or around positive behavior support culminating events. We are having some of our Digital Academy students coming onto campus and participating in Digital Academy-only activities that feel right for those families. And so, we're continuing to encourage that as a way to make them feel safe on our campuses. But there are certainly, as you said, families who've made the decision that the only safe place for their children is at home. And I believe the superintendent agrees with me that that's a choice that we will continue to respect. As somebody who works so closely with the school, I'm hopeful that for those who do feel safe enough to come with these enhanced safety considerations and protocols in place and trust that we can keep their children safe for the time that they're here to take the assessment, that they would do that for all of the reasons that I mentioned before about how we use the required state assessment for.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Daley.
All right. Any other, Ms. Surtin?
Thank you. Ms. Wise, I don't, you didn't mention it, but I'm gonna ask.
Okay.
I read my letter and asked that the assessment not be used for school grades and as part of teacher evaluation. But my question is, since there was no assessment done in 1920, there's no prior academic performance. So how is that part of, have they given you all guidance, or given the districts guidance on how that's gonna be calculated? I mean, I'm hoping there's no calculation at all, but...
For learning gains, for instance, or for...
No, like in the VAM score, the teacher's thing, it says there's the student's prior academic performance, something along those lines.
Right, so it would go to prior, prior year where a score existed. Is that right, Mr. Charbonnet? Yes? Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Paulson?
Yeah, maybe it's, when we started, it was 42, 40, we had distinct percentage in...
Almost 50, yes.
Yeah, of this, this Digital Academy and people that are Brick and Mortar. Are we able to do that now, plus with all high flex courses? How many high flex courses, do we count them in the DA, the high flex? Why do we count them? We count the ones that are at the Brick and Mortar?
So, I'm sorry, are you asking if we know how many, like, at each school, what percentage of the students are digital? I'm sorry, I don't think I... Yes, we know that.
How far is it down significantly?
You mean the size of the, the number of the students in the Digital Academy, or the number of high flex sections?
How are we, how are we measuring the high flex kids? How about kids that are at home compared to kids that are in school?
We do have that. There's an indicator in Skyward. They're indicated as either a Digital Academy student or a Brick and Mortar student.
How is that compared to the beginning of the year?
Oh, we're probably in the upper 20% now, I'd say, 28, 29.
We're at 30%, but it's also, and, and you can see this on our COVID dashboard. You can see every school and how that works, because what we do have is there are certain schools who have considerably more Digital Academy students percentage-wise than others. And so that's why we needed the flexibility at each school level, because some schools have to test a much larger group of their student population than other schools. But across the district, we're now at around 30%.
And the high flex are, if you're a Dig, you're in a high flex class.
You could be, you could be Brick and Mortar and still in a high flex class. That has...
And vice versa.
Correct.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
No, it's fine. I just, like I said last night, you guys, you look back on all the stuff that went on, it's an amazing job you guys have done.
Thank you. The teachers have been amazing.
It's all our, everybody, all our people in the district.
Teachers and administrators, yes.
And I didn't say this last night, but I know the University of Florida was trying to copy our high, our high flex.
It might be.
Well, I mean, this started months ago. That's interesting. So I'm just, a shout-out.
Thank you.
So, is there any indication with all of the testing that we are going to be doing, will the results come back around the same amount of time? Or what, what is that window looking like?
A delay? A delay by almost a month because the window is open so much longer. So, the results will come back relatively the same distance from when the testing ends. But because testing is ending later, the results will be delayed. The results will be delayed.
And I was just wondering, how will you accommodate our third-grade students? And, and, and when will those families be notified of whatever?
So do you have an ETA, Mr. Charbonnet, of the third-grade reading score return?
Good afternoon, Board members, Superintendent. The guidance from the Commissioner's office is that the release of third-grade ELA results will be no later than June 30th, and all other results will be reported no later than July 31st. So by June 30th, we will have those results for third grade.
All right.
So, I'm sure Mr. Berry would also, if he wanted to flesh it out. But for our students who, I mean, our third-grade students who are of concern in terms of how we are projecting they may do on state assessment, they're also being progress monitored in other ways. The slide that I had about the good cause exemption, there are other routes towards promotion to fourth grade. And I'm sure that our schools are making sure that we are monitoring our students using those methods as well as a safety net. We're not gonna put all of our eggs in the third-grade FSA basket.
So, the, the comment under the good cause where has previously been retained one year in grade K2 and has an IEP or a, so you would have to have that as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Wow. So, one more question on that. Just as we have families who are resisting for the testing, what are you gonna do when you have families that object and, and don't have any? How are you gonna, what are you gonna do with that, those students, if anything?
Third grade?
Third grade, fifth grade, middle school?
Well, the only year that triggers this language around retention is third grade.
Right.
Now, of course, for our high school students who are still working for a graduation requirement or a concordant score, you know, this is another opportunity to get that. Our 10th grade students last year didn't have to take the 10th grade FSA ELA test, but that's still a graduation requirement for them. The seniors who hadn't earned that were given that grace of not needing to fulfill that requirement because they didn't have the opportunity to take the test. But our 10th graders who didn't have the opportunity to take the test have subsequent opportunities to either take the 10th grade FSA ELA or get an ACT or SAT concordant score. They still have that graduation requirement. So in terms of you asking about a family who wouldn't, didn't feel safe sending their student for the state assessment, that would be most impactful for the third grade, specifically around the FSA, or a high school student who needed that graduation requirement.
So what decision have we made for the third-grade kid whose family may say? And although you have other indicators that this child may not have gotten a two anyway, but what, what, what are we gonna do?
They would have to have one of these other state-approved alternative assessments in place, or they would be retained?
Okay. All right.
One of, how many students are we, how many students do you predict we might be down going into next year? That we can't find, or?
Uh, Mr. Rela? Wake up. No, he said, how many students are we projected down next year? I don't know that.
So that's a very complicated question. We've kind of worked with the FTE office, and typically what we do with the FTE projection is we get a state projection based on birth rates five years before the school year. So that kind of tells you what kindergarteners potentially would look like in the county. And then heavily weighted on historical, particularly the previous year. For next year, since this year is kind of like a COVID year, which basically the data is so skewed that it makes it really challenging to kind of get in. And I'll cover this in more detail at a budget workshop. But they kind of gave us a baseline and said, you know, as a district, you know more about what you anticipate for next year. So we, Kim and I and a couple others kind of sat down and kind of came up with a strategy on how many homeschoolers we anticipate.
How many are we down right now?
So we're, we're projected to be down, I think...
No, right now, how many are we down?
We're down, I think, 1,200 kids right now, FTE.
And do we count kids? Are these in Florida Virtual or...
These would be our, our students, so our FTE, and it's full-time equivalent. So if they're part-time virtual, part-time...
We're down about 1,200?
Right. Right. So we're projecting based on some assumptions that we'll go through at a budget workshop to be down, I think, around 450 for next year. So there's obviously gonna be a significant budgetary impact to that. And it's impacting, of course, our staffing as we go through that process.
I was gonna ask, the students, for the DA students now, are they having to come on campus to do the alternate assessments, like the ISIP and stuff like that, Ms. Wise? Like, you know, have they been...
For this purpose, they would have to. Yes, ma'am?
I was just wondering about that, if, you know, all along, if they've been having to come on or if they've been doing, doing those assessments at home.
I think digital, you want to speak to that, just routinely?
Yes, routinely, in most cases, they've been doing them at home. But for the score to be counted for this purpose, they would have to be, they'd have to take it at school and to a advised environment. The other piece with this, I know that if a family's not feeling comfortable before the end of the year, there is an option for families to come in right before the new school year starts to get that score as well. We've done that in the past.
And I just have one other thing. Mr. Rela, with the enrollment for our budget stuff, are we gonna be really conservative? Since we've heard in the, before the session started, one of the legislators saying, which they do this anyway, but if they're gonna fund us for actual FTE versus, I don't know what his, what his phrase was he coined, but, so I'm wondering if we're gonna start our budget prep with being down 1,600 students versus 400 or whatever it was achieved?
Right, so definitely we took, and, and my nature is tend to be very conservative, especially when I kind of think through the budgetary process, because we're working on school staffing now. And once you kind of have that staff in place, it's really difficult to pull back. So we're definitely, I think, took a very conservative approach. I hope that we get back to like 2019, 20 enrollment levels. But we actually are lower than that. So I think we were pretty conservative, and then we're also holding back FTEs for the scholarship programs because we continue to see that expansion. So we did make some assumptions on increased family empowerment scholarships and stuff like that. So I think we were pretty conservative, in my opinion. And we're hoping, obviously, we aim low and not, and not high.
Thank you. Thank you, manager.
Now, Chair, I have one question.
All right. Mrs. Marrow?
If we have a separate assessment time for DA students outside the normal hours, who's gonna be monitored? Is that the teacher's responsibility, or?
Well, that's something where we would have to work with schools individually on finding staff willing to work beyond the normal workday. So that could include teachers, administrative staff, district staff, all hands on deck.
I was not aware until we were just told that some assessments have been done at home for the DA students? How is that monitored? I, I, I'm asking, I don't, I don't understand.
Like their teacher test, well, because they're at home, that's the, that's where they are. So I think our teachers work on cameras on, policies, and it's very difficult to replicate a testing environment that we are accustomed to having in the classroom setting in a digital setting. But we have to get information about student progress. So I think we try to balance all of that when we interpret those scores.
Very interesting, that's all I'm gonna say. Very interesting.
Yes, that's come up. I know Mrs. Surtin has been part of those discussions.
Wow.
Yes.
Any other questions for Mrs. Wise? Thank you so much.
Oh, I appreciate your time. Oh, I appreciate your time.
And we're here totally for you. We, we know how difficult it's going to be.
Well, so I might pass around the Saturday assessment, uh, proctoring sheet, and you'd all be encouraged to sign up. I know that Mr. Charbonnet and Ms. Perry will get you trained right up.
Kind of snacks y'all have, man. Snack, depends on snacks, if I'm...
There'll be snacks. Any other comments? Seeing none, oh, you have something, Mr. Coles?
Madam Chair, there are two people attending who have input, if you wanted to hear their comments.
All right, go right ahead.
We have our first from citizen input. They are not identified by name, they're participating by phone. The last four numbers are seven, nine, eight, three. I'm gonna ask them, when they join, if they would identify themselves. So, for Speaker seven, nine, eight, three, you should be allowed to talk, and you have three minutes. Seven, nine, eight, three, can you hear me?
Hello, am I on?
Can you hear through the speaker? Yes, you're on with the board, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Superintendent Simon, Chair...
And we've lost seven, nine, eight, three. While they rejoin, we do have another participant, Ms. Mary Hudulla. Mary, can you hear me?
Hi there, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you're on with the board, you've got three minutes.
Okay. Hi there, my name's Mary Hudulla, I'm a past PTA president at Talbot Elementary, and also a parent of three kids, two in elementary school and one in middle school. Our kids have been home the entire time, going on a year now, it's been a long, long year. They're doing just great, so I compliment you guys, you've done a wonderful job, but I really do not feel comfortable putting them in just for standardized testing. So, how do I go about opting out? Do I just not show up? Any advice you could give?
Hello? Right, you, I think you said, do I just not show up? That would be the way, there is no opt-out, there's no official way to opt out of state testing. We are required to test all of our students, so if your students aren't made available to us to test, they will not be tested. We are hopeful that across the district, we have enough students participating to meet the requirement, the statutory requirement, to test ninety-five percent of our students so that schools can earn a school grade. As, for some of our schools who've been working really hard to improve their school grade, they're, they're working hard to get the results of that state assessment, but certainly, as a parent, you ultimately make the decision about where your children are every day,
Madam Chair, there are no more participants.
All right. The, the first person that we lost did not come back.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other comments, let's go home, meet and adjourn.